Okay, it's 5:02 on Monday, January 15th, and we will call this meeting to order. I want to thank everyone for raving the cold weather and coming out tonight to join us. So, welcome. Everyone would please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call Deb?
Brad?
Here.
Rodney?
I think he was gonna-
Oh, he logged off. He said he'd be here-
Yeah, he was gonna join us live, but probably be late.
Oh, Jessica?
Here.
Don?
Here.
Kathy?
Here.
Harley?
Here. Okay, we do have a quorum. I would entertain a motion to approve today's agenda.
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Don. Any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Brad?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. Across the mayor's desk, I just want to take this opportunity to thank the street department, the fire department, and certainly law enforcement for all your work these past few days with the cold, dangerous weather, and all the snow. So, just thank you very much for all you've done and for taking care of us and the city of Algonah, too. I want to thank our videographer again, Jacob Shutter. Jacob, I think this is about the sixth or eighth council meeting you've helped us with. So, thank you very much for being here. And I just want to invite everyone to the new Grand State Hotel this coming Sunday, January 21st, from 3:00 to 7:00, for an appreciation celebration that Julie and I are hosting. We just want to thank everyone for your patience and support for all of the many projects in the last four years. So, stop by the hotel for some refreshments, and some music, and some conversation. And see at least parts of the new hotel on Sunday. So, anybody else have anything they would like to share? Okay, hearing none. Update from the city administrator.
Just a couple reminders. When the city declares a snow emergency, we've had a couple here the last week or so, but as well as people can sign up to get severe weather alerts and a variety of other notifications, but the Alert Iowa program, they can sign up through Cassuth County Emergency Management. So, just a reminder of that, but especially if you're interested in getting notified of when snow ordinances are in effect, that's the way to do it. And then, just kind of a general reminder, now that, sorry to believe that we're in January, but it's kind of the beginning of the snow season this year. But when we do issue a snow ordinance, we will announce it on KLGA 92.7, the city Facebook page, our website, and then the send out notices through the Alert Iowa. And it's especially important to remind folks with the downtown parking and the side A, side B rotation from 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM. And the reason behind that is, is if we can have all the vehicles parked on the one side over those night hours when the street crews come in at 3:00 in the morning, it makes a lot more efficient and effective for them to make sweeps, you know, of one half at a time, as opposed to having to navigate around cars or having to not address a section because there's cars there. So, I know it can sometimes be, seem like a little bit of a hassle, but there is a method to the madness in terms of allows, it allows us to get the parking lots cleared a lot better and faster, and then move on to the other areas of town. So, just ask residents and people visiting downtown overnight to be cognizant of that to help us with those snow operations. And then, for the rest of the week, the street department will be busy hauling out. So, that will be something here. I know tomorrow morning they'll be going at 3:00 AM again, but for the rest of this week, hauling out as much as we can on where we've had piles build up, in areas where we've had drifting and things like that. So, just ask the public to be patient with us. As we do that, it's a lot of, a lot of snow to move around. And so, just want to share that reminder.
Anything else?
Nope.
Okay, thank you very much. We'll move to agenda item number seven. This is the citizens' opportunity to address the council on any item that's not on the agenda, if anyone would like to speak tonight. Hearing none, we'll move to the consent agenda, and that includes approving the minutes from the January 2nd work session and our regular city council meeting, approving the bills to be paid this cycle, approve the department reports, and the minutes from the various boards and commissions that have met. Do approve.
Second.
Motion from Harley, second from Brad. Any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes. Motion carried. Agenda item number nine, this is the second reading that pertains to housing development regulations in residential zoning districts.
Actually, Mayor, it's the third reading.
Oh, this is the third reading? Okay.
I had a copy and paste there in my memo.
Okay.
The agenda is correct, and that's the third reading.
Yeah, okay.
So, this ordinance makes a series of amendments to Chapter 1704, which pertains to single-family residential zoning. The goal of these changes is try to encourage development of additional housing units and provide for some flexibility for that. So, some of those changes include permitting triplexes in the RS-60 zoning district, and all single-family districts allowing for construction of accessory dwelling units upon being granted a conditional use permit by the Board of Adjustment, and then has administrative discretion authorities to the zoning administrator for being able to grant limited setback waivers on front yard setbacks. We see this law on especially our west side of town, where our modern-day setbacks don't fit well with how the city was originally platted. So, looking at the built environment around there and allowing for some adjustments, so we could hopefully get some new development with some of the older homes, but being able to adjust those setbacks to fit in with the character and the existing built environment. And then, makes various definition updates for accessory dwelling unit, conditional use, infill development, and related items.
Motion to waive the third reading?
Second.
We have a motion, a second to waive the third reading. Any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried.
Motion to approve the third reading.
Second.
Motion, a second to approve the third reading. Any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried.
And then, final motion to adopt the ordinance.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Brad, to adopt this ordinance. Any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 10 is first reading of establishing the urban forest utility.
So, we've discussed this proposed ordinance at a few different council work sessions. But what this ordinance would do is establish a new city chapter that would create a urban forest utility. It would be collected same way as our storm water utility currently is, with a flat fee to utility account users. So, the proposed starting fee would be $2 per month. And the use of those revenues would be restricted towards, going towards the maintenance treatment, removal, disposable, and reuse of trees or tree-related materials, compost and mulching, so operating the compost site at Veterans Park, and then planting of new trees. And the areas that those funds would be able to be used is on any city-owned property, so including city trees in the right-of-way, but as well as cemetery parks and any other city-owned grounds. And what prompted looking at this was as we started looking at Emerald Ash Board mitigation plans and doing the treatments, as well as having to do removals, now that's here in Cassuth County, and the cost of that, as well as some of the funding revenue challenges that we have with property tax reform to fund items. So, this, you know, this first year, it's projected that that $2 would generate about And then, over time, that would increase to $2.25 January 1st, 2025, $3 January 1st, 2026. And then, unless the ordinance is changed by a future council, would increase by automatically 3% each year on January 1. And anticipate these funds, like I said, going towards the Emerald Ash Board mitigation, just the regular maintenance of parks and right-of-way trees for main removals, and then operating the compost site at Veterans Park. So, it's proposed that the effective date of the ordinance would be March 20th to coincide with the new billing cycle, so folks could, would see it on that bill they receive at the end of April.
So, we're gonna have an increase the first couple years, but just letting people know that that $2 is, collects way less than we actually need to cover with the expenses that are stipulated here. So, we're bringing it in a little gently to try and not be a little bit more absorbable in a person's budget.
Motion to waive the first reading?
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Don, to waive the first reading. Any other discussion? Vote please Deb.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes. Motion carried. And motion to approve the first reading.
Second.
Motion from Harley, second from Don, to approve the first reading. Any discussion? Vote please Deb.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jess?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harley?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. Agenda item number 11 involves hotel-motel tax reports.
The city has a 7% hotel-motel tax that it collects. And then, there is a, in accordance with state law and the ballot initiative, there are requirements on how those funds have to be spent. And to meet that, the city council had previously passed a resolution allocating those funds. So, with that, annually, the entities that receive hotel-motel tax funds from the city report on the use of those funds. And so, that's what we have here tonight. So, I believe we have representatives from the chamber and the POW museum. So, Mayor, whoever you want to call it.
I think everybody should have gotten the information in the packet. So, this is a great thing for our businesses, for our entities, all the attractions. Obviously, it's another tax that's made by our citizens. It's people who travel through the community, and we've been very successful utilizing those funds since 2005 when this was voted in. Any specific questions on this information that was in the package?
Any changes that you're anticipating improvements?
Well, as I indicated, Western Iowa Tourism Region has a new travel guide. The timing last year was pretty tight to participate, but we are going to be present in that guide this year. And one of the things that I've noticed over the years is there are always opportunities that pop up throughout the year that allow for additional promotion for the community and for people to visit Algonah and our area. So, it's always, it's always good to have some reserves to be able to take advantage of those.
Any other questions? All right, thank you very much for sharing and-
Thank you.
-all that you do.
All right, thanks.
And Jerry, if you'd like to come up?
Thank you very much. Good evening, everyone. I want to thank you once again for including us on the original ballot that approved the hotel-motel tax several years back, and we just really appreciate that a great deal. You have the letter that Greg Stewart, our Secretary Treasurer, wrote, that is in your pocket, I believe. Questions as you might ask?
I guess I have a same question for you. Any changes you're looking at that people will be interested in in the museum?
Yeah, we are making some significant changes in the structure of our museum. Thanks to the same generous governor that benefited the city, we're using, of course, to have money to expand into the west part of our building and add, if you will, another wing on the museum, spread out a little bit more, or spread out the artifacts and exhibits in the third part of the building, and make some additional attractions for people to see as they, as they come. So, that'll be our green thing over the next two-year cycle. The process of building is underway now, and it will take, we figured by at least the first of May, that portion won't be used until perhaps the latter part of summer, but definitely then be ready for the next cycle. One of the things that we have done over, over a period of time, we have raised our admission rate for the first time since the very beginning. Now, we knew from the very beginning that the admission rate was not going to pay all the bills. Matter of fact, we wasn't going to pay very many of them, and we wanted to keep the rate down. So, we've gone from $3 to $5 for all our bills. And I think that's a moderate increase, and I don't think doubling that even would have made, this will give us a little bit more, more income. This will be our 20th full year of operation. We began in 2004, and so this summer will be our 20th full year of operation. We didn't open until, I believe, well about mid-July, I think it was on Founder's Day, or Founder's Weekend, when we opened back in 2004. We have increased our attendance virtually every year except the year of COVID, and this last year was a record high for us, a little over 3,000 visitors. And the visitors come from mainly Iowa and Minnesota. The Minnesotans were willing to go out and travel, and we're appreciative of that. We reciprocate by going and drawing forms there nicely. But we do have a number of bus tours that come regularly from different companies over the central Midwest. And there are about 12 different bus tours, as well as a number of visitors that come, not just two to a car, but four or six to a car. And we think that they do add a great deal to our economy. They have to eat, they need to fill up with gas, they need to do some shopping, and we have a very handy area that they can break down on State Street. And so, that's always, always great to see them, see them come. Again, this year, we had a couple of different car, car shows, an old car show and a newer car, sport car show. And those are always, the only thing about it is that those that are on duty can't go out and see because the people are inside and swive to take a peek at the, at the old cars or the new cars, kind of out the window. We are going to also increase the number of books that are written about the prisoner of war saga during World War II, and also magazines for sale. There are several magazines that feature historical things. This year, we were, we were featured in Iowa History Illustrated Magazine that's published, published out of Des Moines. I think they, they have an office in Iowa City as well. But there was a two-phase, two different issues. We were featured in the first one, and then the second one in November, December, the prisoner of war camp at Clorinda. This was a second prisoner of war camp or the other prisoner of war camp in Iowa during World War II. It does not have a museum except a portion, a small portion in their kind of historical society, but there was a nice article written about that, that topic. And so, our year, as we said, has been, been gained in attendance. We also like to consider a combination visits, and that's something that we're getting more and more attractions in Algonah now. We now have a third place, third, fourth place for people to stay overnight, and that is, is going to help people come to and be accommodated here when they, when they come to Algonah. The, one of the thing that, that, I can't think of my writing. Yeah, I want to mention that from the very beginning, we wanted to make sure that the museum was a place for students from the area who come and visit. Predominantly, this might be because there's quite a few of the teachers on our, on our board, and we'd love to have those young students come in. And so, they are, they have been free from the very beginning if they go to school in Cassuth County. And we also have a number of other schools that participate in sending some of their students for different kinds of activities, like National History Day or reports that they're, they're involved with in their, in their school. So, we like to always welcome them and encourage them. Anytime that you can get students to have their parents drive, drive them to a place where they can study history, yeah, and all of that. All right, any questions? Thank you so much. We appreciate your support.
Thank you, Jerry.
Yeah.
I'll just note, the other entities that receive hotel-motel tax dollars are the Algonah Area Economic Development Corporation. They receive 15% share. Those funds are all paid back to the city to support personnel expenses for economic development staff of the communications manager and community development director positions. And then, 20% goes to City Parks Capital Fund. Those funds are all budgeted to go towards the Central Park Project this year. And then, the other 20% goes towards the City General Fund, which are used for general operations.
So, there's real no action that we need to take on this? This is information in-
Nope. Annual reports.
All right. Agenda item number 12 concerns a pay application for the wastewater treatment plant.
As you may recall, it's been a while, but it was in the fall of 2022, we had bid a project to do some improvements to the secondary wet well out of the sewer project. Bids came in significantly higher than what we anticipated. So, at that time, we approved a reduced scope of work with the contractor TJ's Trucking and Excavating, and then was able to kind of narrow down that scope even more to get the immediate improvements made with some of the other items. Made more sense to incorporate those into the larger upgrade project that is later on the agenda. So, I guess with that brief introduction, we have Kevin Graves and Emma, I can never say her last name.
Norton-Burden?
Sorry, Emma, if we got that wrong again. But they're joining us by conference call, so I don't know if Kevin or Emma, if you want to give kind of just a quick update on the project and this pay application.
Sure, thank you, David. Yeah, that's what it was, what it's on. So, this was work that had been targeted to be primarily, you know, time-sensitive, why have you had done before our, our large project? The majority of the work that was within the scope was done actually, I guess, last fall, over a year ago, and the punch list items got completed here in 2023. We had the unusual circumstance of contractors that did the work on time, but then actually didn't do the paperwork to get their pay request in for quite a long time, usually the opposite. So, this, this is actually for work performed, you know, roughly a year ago. But we had a total, original total of $179,035 with that scope. $89,300 is what is on the pay request here for tonight. That is the, the work that's owed minus retainage, which will be held and paid off here at probably your next council meeting. And so, $94,000 was the scope of work identified that TJ's Trucking performed. The balance of the rest of that work did get translated over into our other project, and that's included in what we're going to talk about next. And yeah, we can, certainly entertain any questions that you guys may have since it's been a little while.
The only thing would be the relationship between these two agenda items. This is one that was some work that's going to be done that is in a different area than what the new construction will be. So, it was done, do I understand that right? I mean, I hope-
It's always had to be different areas. The, the reason that we had identified it to go before the other project was, was because of the, some of the concrete that was falling apart and the nature of the pumps that were there and not wanting the city staff to get into a position where they had failing equipment and, and, you know, were worried about waiting until this other project came forward in order for it to, to be taken care of. So, the real time-sensitive things were done, and the rest of those items were brought into the other project that weren't just time-sensitive or, or that made sense to, to pair with a larger project for cost efficiency.
Because Kevin, in, under the new plan, the second, the current secondary wet well will be repurposed towards?
Yep, that will be the, what is now the secondary wet well, the improvements there will be repurposed into our primary raw sewage wet well. So, all the, all of the flow from City of Algonah will come into this basin that has been improved now. So, we want to make sure that it could, you know, could, could last for an extended period of time, since it will be kind of that main new structure that's being used.
Okay, move to approve the pay application.
Second.
We have a motion from Harley, second from Don, to approve this pay application. Any other discussion? Vote please Deb.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you. And agenda item number 13 pertains to wastewater treatment plant upgrade project.
So, this resolution is, I guess, probably the formal kickoff for the project that's been in the works here now for five-plus years about the wastewater treatment facility upgrade. So, what this resolution does is orders the notice to bidders, approves the project plan, specifications, form of contract, and then sets a public hearing regarding the proposed project for March 18th, which is also- project for March 18th, which is also when we anticipate awarding the construction contract. The bid opening will be held on March 6th at 2:00 PM. And then looking at, once we work construction contracts, beginning work in the spring, and then that going over three construction seasons and wrapping up in the fall of 2026. So that's a very high-level summation of a $20 million, once in a generation overhaul of our wastewater treatment plants. I will let the engineers go into a little bit more detail on the process of the project.
Thanks, Ken Jacob. And first off, I will say we appreciate the flexibility from the city council to have us attend this meeting virtually. The weather has not been real conducive to longer distance traveling here recently. So thank you. We will, we went over quite a bit of detail on this at your December work session. So even though I asked Barbara, she wanted to do line-by-line, the 247 plant uses we have as recap, she politely declined and said, let's keep this more brief.
Thank you.
We have, here, very well. So we have a couple of figures that we've included here in your packet. First is the, what the treatment plant looks like now. And the second is what it's going to look like after we've done our overhaul. So both of the structures and piping that you see there in red will be the things that will not be there once we're done with the project. Both existing structures that are being abolished. And then the second page shows kind of that new, the new set of structures. The largest being down at the bottom are observation dish structures that are going to do the heavy testing of the wastewater treatment process. Those include the anaerobic and oxygen, the oxygen zone for that nitrogen that factors from oil that's really driving the project from the DNR's regulatory perspective. You can see that we're also reimagining how the, all the vehicles will get around at the plant. We're redoing some of the roads, adding a storage garage for some of the vehicles at the treatment plant and, but not least, also relocating the existing dump and structure on campus. We definitely want to make sure they've got a good home in there. Couple of the items that I wanted to just also mention from a project schedule perspective would be that we have, we've outlined what's going to be happening between now and when we recommend a bid awards to the city. And Jacob touched on a few of these already, kind of hit the high points with our bid letting being scheduled for March 6th. But this line-by-line schedule will show some of the other things that are happening behind the scenes with that. So there'll be some notifications and publications that we work through with city staff, make sure that we get those, that notice to bidders, notice of public hearing adequately posted. We'll be contacting general contractors that may be bidding on this project. We started that process and have had several of those wastewater specialty contractors that have indicated interest in bidding. So we're encouraged by that. And there's also several items on the schedule that talk about the environmental review process. So in order to utilize the state revolving fund money, the mortgage loan that we're looking to use for the bulk of the funding, there is an environmental review process that includes several different items, including floodplain analysis, archeological study, state historic preservation office review. So we're working through those in parallel with the technical review of our plans and specifications at the DNR level. And planning to have all of that wrapped up right around the same time that we are receiving those bids on March 6th. Planning to come back to city council meeting on the 18th of March, hopefully with good news on our bids with the contractors and also kind of hopefully give you word that we didn't have any other last-minute pickups and environmental review process. Any specific questions kind of on our schedule or anything more of the plans that we're doing that we didn't touch on at the work session?
I don't think anybody's got any questions, Kevin.
All right. Hearing none, I guess we would request that you guys consider that resolution and the subject letting date and approve our plans. And we'll move forward to the schedule as we have on the screen.
Motion to move ahead with the resolution. Good morning.
Second.
We have a motion from Rodney, second from Brad. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carried. Thank you. Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you very much.
And we'll see in the future.
All right. Next one.
Move to agenda item number 14. This is a resolution approving engagement agreement with Alors and Cooney.
This relates to the wastewater project in that we're in need of bond council services for the planned issuance of debt through the state revolving loan fund. So this improves the uploaded with the agenda letter of engagement with Alors and Cooney, who's been our longtime bond counsel. And it would be for a flat fee of $3,500 to do all the public notices, the legal review, and put everything together, a nice package for us when we go to issue this debt to make sure we took, followed all the steps laid out in the Iowa code.
Motion approved. Second, Jever.
Motion from Don, second from Rodney, to approve this engagement agreement. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes.
Motion carried. Agenda item number 15 pertains to pre-schedule for various applications and services.
So I did print off a copy of this resolution for you. But as we discussed in past work sessions, looking at adopting updated fees for various services and applications, I'll just pull the, so the resolution approves the attachment, more or less. So I'll just go through the attachment. The first one, section one, is the building permit fees. It's been 1996 was the last time the city increased our building permit fees. So this adjusts those for the first time. It also specifies our process for determining the construction value. A building permit is based on the value of it. So for, we have set per square values for residential construction for calculating what that construction value is. And then for commercial, we refer to the February 2023 International Code Council building valuation data for determining those. It also has different fees related to emergency rein inspections or inspections outside normal business hours, development permits like floodplain, fences, signs, and awnings. Section two is planning and zoning. And section three is board of adjustment. So these would be applications to either of these boards or commissions. They don't cover all the costs incurred by the city to receive and review these applications, but again, helps offset some of those costs. And again, with board of adjustments, and that's, since that is quasi-judicial, there's often extensive legal work involved with those. And then section four is the fees that we would charge for code enforcement or if there's other entities that need to use the equipment of our public works department. So this would be if we need to do code enforcement, such as mowing or snow removal, hawther build, or if another entity needs to use our compost screener or things like that, what our billable rates are, that we charge on those.
And just to clarify, those rates include an operator? We don't just let them take our loader? The operator goes with the loader and operates it for that entity?
Well, I just want to say thank you for being aware of these outdated fees and services and getting us up to date. And that's, that's great. Move to approve the new rates.
Second.
A motion from Harley, second from Kathy. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes. Motion carried. Agenda item number 16 is to approve the tax exemption application.
Little Sprouts Daycare at 121 North Dodge Street has submitted a tax-exempt application for improvements to an existing commercial structure. They've requested the 10-year declining scale. Recommend approval.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion from Rodney, second from Don, to approve this tax exemption application. Any discussion? Vote please, Deb.
Brad?
Yes.
Rodney?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Don?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Harvey?
Yes. Motion carried. Thank you, and we wish you continued success there at Little Sprouts. And the final agenda, item number 17, is appointment to the Housing Commission, and this is an appointment by the mayor. I have been in conversation with an individual and just waiting to hear back from him. So we should be able to confirm that appointment in two weeks, actually in three weeks at our next meeting. That brings us to the end of our published agenda, and it's 5:45. I would entertain a motion to adjourn. We have a motion, a second. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much, and we will return to our work session shortly.